Okay, at this time I'd like to call the meeting forward. Brian.
President.
Chris Hill.
President.
David Schmidt.
President.
Brian Hahn.
Yes.
Brian, here. I am going to call the president.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this point, I also want to, uh... do a little announcement. We received two letters that like, uh... This one was received by Mr. Josh Thomas. And it says, "Dear NACUSA Public School Board, I personally want to thank you for the recent efforts and new conversations and plans for this job. I sincerely enjoy my employment at NACUSA Public School and appreciate your support and I look forward to 2021 school year and again appreciate your support and gold favoring." Thank you very much. Now, I also want to read another one that I, uh... I found to bring with me. This one was received from a member of our staff. I just wanted to take a moment today for showing you how you value, how you value that you can do stuff by having the unanimous decision on a new conversation topic. And given for myself, but I ensure that a team member feel the same when I'm excited for the next step in the platform development. It really are worth a difference, gift again. As we presented to the staff last evening, you see the morale of the staff be lifted immediately. We were all grateful for the work that has been invested and it has happened and grateful for the approval. One comment from the future. This plan of the game is for me. This is the future of the third year teaching. Another comment. I was concerned about getting our certification, but this allows a way for me to use all and accent on brand new features. When presented with the National Board of Certification idea, many have shown an initial input, input, enough so... So, that as a committee, we are taking steps to get that in place as soon as possible. I just wanted to share my thoughts with you and how we're moving, and how we are moving forward right now. Again, thank you for your commitment to the teachers and students of NACUSA. You are not in an easy position and I respect your work as a board. I look forward to sharing an update in the future. Sincerely, Heidi Hartman. I, uh...I really appreciate that quote comments from our staff and I think, you know, that, that the weight of the last meeting was such that it meant a lot. Now, in that respect, um, with regards to our last meeting, I don't feel we gave fair, fair judgment or light to the presentation given by Mr. Grill and Mrs. Mrs. Niprah. Um, I can tell you I shut down early on, um, just probably because of the weight of the meeting and just kinda shut me down. But I want to honor the work that, that, that's been done by, by Brian and, and, uh... Mrs. Niprah, Denise, may I call you Denise? Very good. Um, this meeting was called, the board. Um, the board wanted to express some of their views and, and I think we're just a bit overwhelmed. Am I speaking for, we, I felt overwhelmed that last meeting. You know, I just didn't have it, you know?
Other venue, just devoted to this.
This, this was, you know, we just didn't have time and I want to apologize for that, you know, for not, for if we gave you that impression of no interest. Um, and kinda shutting down, I shut down, but tonight we want to have that open discussion and, and as a board, I think it's important that, that each and every one of us are on board. Um, Mr. Whitmore, any comments?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm excited to jump into that part of the, the agenda, but can we approve this early college credit program application?
I can do that.
Yeah.
I can do that. Um...
So, Mr. Johnson is available to talk about that if you...
Mr. Johnson, would you please, uh, talk about that early college credit program application?
Sure, um... The application is for, um, a student who had been interested back in February in the, um, in possibly pursuing the early, early college credit program. Um, and then she decided not to, but then through the course of living online learning, decided that she would, um, like to go there. And so, she has four courses listed, the way that the early college credit program works, the way that NACUSA College now as well works. If we have a course that is considered comparable, then, um, my recommendation would be to, to not approve that course. We have on that list, uh, Econ 110 is a principles of macroeconomics. We do have an economics class, which would be a comparable high school course. Um, macroeconomics is covered in part, obviously, not to the depth of a whole semester course at the college level. And then we also have oral communications and one of the courses requested on there is Comp 101. Uh, and oral communication would be a comparable, um, course again. So, my recommendation would be to approve, uh, my request would be really a recommendation, would be to approve both the astronomy 100 and the music theory 100. Um, you know, in full disclosure, this is something that would usually come in March, but in the nature of how things have played out, I would ask that you consider and approve the early college credit application. And then we need to get that to the UWSP office tomorrow, actually, as they're doing enrollment for those courses.
Sure, and how would the credits, uh, how would she take care of those other credits?
Uh, she could take, I mean, she could do high school classes if she wanted to, um, she's not, you know, she's not in a situation where she actually needs those credits. Um, so, you know, working with, uh, Mrs. Evers through the counseling office and scheduling, she could take care of things, but, but I don't see those as classes that are, you know, neither of those classes are required courses for her.
And so, she would no longer then be a student or we could count her, but she wouldn't be eligible for sports or anything like that?
Oh, no, she will continue to be a student, yeah, those are both online classes, so she'll be taking some high school, you know, she could take some high school courses and then she would also have those two online college courses.
What's, what does it hurt to approve all?
Well, if we offer the courses here, that, that the way the program works is they'll offer if they can take courses that we don't offer. So, we offer the courses here, so if we're offering them here, the district wouldn't pay for them there.
Oh, we would have to pay for them?
Right.
But she would be in a position where she could play sports and if she'd be a regular high school student, then graduate anyway?
Yeah, she'll be graduating, she'll just be taking a couple of courses like, you know, many of our kids take, uh, mid-state course.
Would she be attending school at all?
Yeah, she'd be here. She'll have a, a schedule, like a good high school schedule.
Very good, uh, motion on the floor to approve the early college program application as presented by Mr. Johnson?
I'll push that motion.
Second. We have a first and a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Would you be able to leave a copy of the signed form that just in the office and we'll get it back to over mail over tomorrow?
We don't have a signed form, but I will certainly get one.
Okay, yeah, 'cause we just need to get that turned in by tomorrow.
We use, send me a signed form, I'll print one here and then have one of the board members sign it. Perfect. All right, Mr. President, then could I add a few things? Play back to the...
Yes, if you wanna, if you wanna continue that segue into, uh, the board input into where we are right now with the return of school.
Sure, so, uh, Brian Grill and I met with Brian Giese last Thursday for a couple hours just to talk about some topics that we thought would be, have the interest and really allow for some conversation to happen between the board, uh, between the board members and for us to hear as well. And certainly all of these topics, Brian, I was talking to Brian, uh, Giese about, you know, the amount of input that really we've been seeking from you. You know, maybe not holistically where we're sitting now, but individually and certainly at, at some of our workshops, you've had a chance to weigh in. So, we certainly want you to own the work that's been done by many committee members, uh, in the district, but these are topics that you can choose from. We certainly want this to be driven by you so that we, we can share with you what information that you want. So, really, it's a menu, uh, of options for us to talk about tonight. Otherwise, we can't go right down the list too, Denise is here to, to weigh in and we really want it to be a, an open dialogue between the board and committees.
Sure, and if I may, I, you know, upon reflection, you know, Mr. Grill, most of your, most, you do so many things behind the scenes all the time. And this is one of those things that, you know, was in that purview, but, you know, there, there were some aspects that were a little bit different than some of the programs that you typically work with. And, you know, I, I think it was just, for me personally, it was just a matter of that communication aspect. And I'd like to work through this list, but, um, I guess, you know, board members, is there anything in particular that you would see on this list that you would like to, like to weigh in on?
Sure.
And then we can get into a more formal discussion, um, with Mr. Grill and, uh, Mrs. Niprah. So, I'd offer, I'd offer the floor to you gentlemen.
I think, I think I'll start the discussion. I spent the last couple of weeks talking with teachers and community members, um, and a lot of teachers are scared to send their children to school, let alone be teaching at school. Um, and I understand that what's going on may not be a popular vote, but, um, we need to do the right thing because we're playing with the health of our children, of our district, community members and their family members. I just want to start off with that.
Very good, thank you, Cody.
I think the best thing to do is just hit them all.
Very good.
Mm-hmm.
Good. Let's go, let's do that then, um, Mr. Uh, Pat Day.
No, I just, I'm just agreeing with Brian.
Very good, very good. The floor is yours, Brian and...
So, yeah, let's go right down the list and have a conversation and certainly, uh, board, we really want you to have input on each of the topics.
So, would you like me to start, just kinda let, you know, what the plan suggests?
Yeah.
And then you make comments from there?
I think that's maybe just a quick synopsis of it and that's, I mean, that's how I feel.
Okay. So, quick synopsis, starting with personal protective equipment. What the plan, as you know, there is the mandate that came out last week, but what we previously had on the plan was, excuse me, we are looking at face masks were gonna be required for staff and then for students at the green level, it was gonna be highly recommended and at the moderate level. So, the yellow level is gonna be highly recommended. As you know, that changed a little bit Thursday, so that's gonna be changing our approach, but that's what the plan currently calls for.
So, could we just talk a little bit about that now that we do have that in place and of course, that was last Thursday? One of the big things that I've heard from you and other parents is this whole idea that kids would put a mask on before they get on the bus in the morning and then take it off right before dinner. I mean, that's kind of this mindset, so do you want to just talk a little bit about what, and we, again, we just learned of this last Thursday as well, so, but Brian met with...
So, I met with a subcommittee, it's the student safety subcommittee, where we did unpack a little bit today, it was, we was involved with John Thomas, John Sprague, myself, we're the ones in attendance today. And we started talking about this is gonna be mandated for who the breaks come in for staff, for students, so that way it's not all day they're wearing this. So, we were talking about how do we build in those supports? You know, the high school and looking at their schedule, where's that afternoon break where kids can go outside, take this off? Elementary, what does recess look like? Can they take this off during recess, during lunch and how do we build in breaks there? So, we were having discussion of what does that look like to meet requirements of the mandate? Because we said, you know, talking with Denise as well, to go all day with this, it's not healthy, you know, to go all day. You do need breaks, so where do we build in those breaks to make sure that it's not, you're going eight hours straight without having this on? Is there...
Right.
Yep.
So, definitely like for physical education, recess, um, you know, the, the times that we do probably require would be like if they're, you know, going in between classes, traveling down the hallways where they can't maintain their six feet social distancing, that would be the type of wear mask, so. We've looked at other schools too that, and then I know DPI is also working on guidance for what does it look like for, you know, breaks from wearing the cloth covering?
What are we going to do when a student refuses to wear a mask? Say that again?
What are we gonna do when someone says, "I'm not wearing a mask"?
That we've gotta work through, but we've already had a couple of people that have showed up today and we're just asking to leave and they can come back when they are wearing a face covering. I mean, we've gotta further discuss that, but that, I, I just met with other superintendents, that's what they're doing. What, I'd be curious to know what you guys, your thoughts are on that.
What about the medical conclusions of so, I guess that's the question I would have.
Right, right, I think I wrote one today for one of my patients that she just can't wear it, so I, I'm working with her, I said, "Well, let's try like the sleeve or the gait or, or maybe the bandana", you know, but there are gonna be times when you're not able to wear it, like right now.
Well, and what about, I mean, is it, is it our school districts right to say, what, I don't, I don't imagine we can say, "Well, what is your medical condition"? Can we?
Well, I would think they would, they would have to provide a medical excuse, just like if you're, you're not gonna participate, if I, uh, you provide a medical excuse. So, that, like Denise provided one today?
I mean, I'm thinking HIPAA-wise, I mean, are we, or is that a solid thing or are we gonna get in trouble for saying, "I don't have to tell you what my medical condition is because I, it's a violation of HIPAA"?
That's a good question.
I'll say that's a discussion that was being had with the area directors on Friday. So, that's where we posed the question to DPI, things like that, saying, you know, can we require a medical, you know, from a doctor, say, "You can only not wear it if you have a medical", can we do that? So, that's a question I have posted with the directors in the area, 'cause that was our question too here and we're like, "We don't know, can we, can we"?
Good point.
And there's some of our students that are not gonna be able to wear it, you know, if they can't take the mask off themselves, well then, you know, we have to, I forget, there was like five or six that Governor Evers posted about, actually the exception not, and then just those, so...
Right. So, and could they come out with more guidance on that too? I mean, that just came out last Thursday, I'm sure his office is being inundated, but yes, we'll check into that. Any other thoughts on it?
Um, one thing that I read from the, what Evers posted is that face shields don't count.
Yeah, they don't, 'cause we were thinking the same thing.
So, I know we were looking at that.
Yeah.
We were excited.
Yeah, 'cause you're gonna, you know, you, you have that chance for the air exchange to, you know, pass through here and then up and up too, so, that, the face shield is added protection on top of the mask. So, for certain staff, that would be, like the health staff people will be required to do the mask and the face shield.
One, one thing that I have questions on too is what are the negatives health-wise from wearing a mask for an extended period of time?
I'll say, in reading my research, I've been reading a lot from what's suggested guidelines, I'll say, reading the negatives of what it can do. I'll say I haven't dug into that research entirely, to be honest, so I can give you a...
Sure.
...feedback to you?
The reason?
There's more pros to wearing a mask than there is cons.
Right.
So...
But there's gotta be some negatives.
Yeah, but hypothetically speaking, when we're wearing the mask, we're, it's to protect others, um, you know, from coming home, our parents, things like that, so we're not gonna be exposed to, let's just say if someone sneezes or something like that, it's gonna help protect the distance measure-wise too. So, it's not just relatively...
I, I understand that, I just want to know if there's a negative health result for me wearing a mask for an extended period of time?
Well, that's for almost any day in this world, you know, there's a negative to everything, so...
Right. In my own experience, you know, I, if I find myself having trouble breathing, I may have to go to my doctor and say, "Hey, I'm just having trouble wearing this". And I think that's gonna be based on my own personal experience and what it does for myself, that's my, and I say that just for myself, you know, because...
Well, I need breaks from it.
I know.
So, kids are gonna need breaks, so...
Well, one of the reasons I ask is because in here, one of the things that's flagged is headaches, right?
Right.
And I don't know, but I, I know from my experience in painting cars, when my oxygen level got low, I would get a headache. And if it got severely low, I would get flu-like symptoms. So, now, so now I'm going to be quarantined because my oxygen level went low. And I know OSHA from my painting experience required me to have certain things in place so my oxygen level wouldn't go low.
Thank you.
So...
Yeah, we're in a tough spot.
I know we're in a tough spot.
Yeah, and I think the worst thing that we have right now is Governor Evers' requirement and...
Mm-hmm.
Until, and then, then the research that's out there and it, you know, it, we've all seen the, the news and, and what other districts have in subject too. And I can't speak much other than to say that this is a evolving topic. I talked to Ms. Ms. Niprah maybe three months ago for advice on another subject and you wished you had that, that crystal ball that could show you what the future's gonna look like and we just don't have that.
Mm-hmm, I get it. But Pat does bring up a good point that we are going to be considering those types of things, Pat, before we say, "Yep, quarant, you know, self-quarantine". So, that brings up a really good point that we need to be...
Right.
Looking at a baseline of some sort before we just chalk it up to 14 days of quarantine.
Right.
So, thank you. Any, anything, any other concerns around that topic?
What about update on the plexiglass? I know that last time we were working on that, is that gonna be here before school starts or is it gonna be late? Just another concern with PPE.
So, with the plexiglass, Steve Hersberg and I put the order in, not last Friday, the Friday before, and they did say it should be here for the beginning of the school year. So, each principal put their order in and Steve and I put in one large order to, we're working with Laird Plastics out of DeForest, Wisconsin, and they said they had enough plexiglass to make sure everything will be here for the beginning of the year, so...
And our office ones have already arrived, so that's, those are in place, or at least here. I don't know if they're in UP yet.
I don't think they're out here at the middle school.
But it, it's arriving.
Any other comments with regards to the mask? Good point.
So, risk levels, did you have one there?
Well, I'm just, uh, wondering if, uh, Governor's Evers mandate is overturned by the legislature, are we gonna be needing again to change our protocol here?
That would be updates. I mean, I would say that it probably would go back to where we were, you know, where we were encouraging, trying to create a culture of wearing a face mask when you put social distance. So, I mean, both at green and yellow, we were encouraging people, especially like Denise said, with your next, I mean, we bought plexiglass in hopes that we could have kids working without it on 100% of the time. So, I would say yes, we'll revisit that.
Okay.
Any, Ms. Niprah or Brian, any additional information on that or...
PPE.
Okay. Next thing we got, the risk levels, it's gonna, you know, we kinda, I did turn off a little bit, but we were hooked in with the, with the, with the health department and the monitoring tool. Can you go over that again?
Yep, so, I have two links there for you on the agenda that shows here's two data points, we're working with the county to say, we're watching the different levels. We've also had a bi-weekly meeting with them currently and we're trying to work on the gate system that they're looking at to say, you know, what's the availability of the county upside, quick and things like that, that's also another data point. But then what we're hoping to bring to the table is when a family calls in for attendance, we're gonna ask, "What symptoms is your child showing"? So, that way we can say, "Yeah, hunky, here's how many kids who are out with a fever at the middle school, here's how many are out with a cough". And then to what we discuss, what risk level are we at? We take it one building at a time, so that way it's not just the district. We move as buildings or in some cases depending class, 'cause if cohorts can be maintained, it might be a class, is it at, say, red, but not the whole school is at red. But those are the discussions we would have on a weekly basis with, with county, so, and currently those meetings are set up where Mr. Whitmore, Mrs. Niprah, myself, and then we have two members from the county health department meeting with us.
And what are the criteria for green, yellow, red, or green over there?
So, we haven't set those gates yet, matter of fact, tomorrow we're digging into that because by, by, you know, two weeks before school starts, we want to be able to let, let parents know and the community know where we're at and where we're gonna be starting. So, again, we'll be looking at those dashboards at the county, like right now, we have 11 active cases in the Nacusa School District, right? So, that will be one piece of information we look at. We'll look at, at this document inside here, this is what will be, you know, we aren't gonna have this on the front end, of course, but once school starts, we're gonna be documenting, you know, the types of illnesses that are in our schools, so we'll be using this information. And then there's the state, uh, data out there as well, you know, for, for each county.
Yeah, and that's from Department of Health and Services, so Wisconsin, so they have one specific for Wood County. Um, the other thing I wanted to share too is that at our last meeting, David had, had, um, he mentioned that he's putting one specific, specific for school. So, I was really excited to hear Nacusa would have specific data entry or data collective for COVID. So, that'll be nice, 'cause then we can use that for determining which level we go in at.
Mm-hmm. But from what I've heard to answer your question, Brian, like what's the criteria, like some of the things we have discussed, is there upward trajectory, is it steady, is it declining? That's gonna be one thing we look at, is what's the trajectory? Um, another criteria is gonna be active cases, how many active, 'cause looking at the whole number, because if you look overall, like, "Oh, there are 20 cases in March", that doesn't sound so bad, but you have 20 overall and 19 active as of this point, that's not so bad. So, we're gonna look at the active cases, the trajectories, those are two criteria we have talked about, for sure they're good, going to, there are other ones we are discussing to...
I just agree about the, I don't know if it's the, some states are using the percent positive tests, they're saying, what is it, the 5% rule?
So, Wood County has to have at least, I think it's 155 tests to show statistical significance. So, I looked today and I think... So, I looked today and I think that the last few days we've been hitting that target because that would be true representation of Wood County.
Right.
So, I'm very impressed with the Wood County Health Department. They've done a fantastic job and, yeah.
If I could make a recommendation, Terry, that any, when we hit these data points, include that in a board update if you could.
Sure.
You know, if that's possible for
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know, maybe Brian and Denise to tie that, you know, linkage into the board. If that, I would appreciate it as a board member. The one thing that, you know, without any, any of our policies or program, I feel like we're ambassadors, you know, the people are, you know, our folks are coming up to us and asking what we're doing at a district. And the more information that we have, the better off I feel of all. I always know the right answer, talk to someone else. But it's also good for me to know those important data points and things of that nature.
Well, and I think...
Then I feel, you know, the stakeholder of this community put us in this position to be those ambassadors. And that's, that's, that's how I feel very strongly about that.
And I think, I think it's important to note that, you know, the, the three tiers, we, we have no, my, my, our goal, and I don't think it will happen, is where we'd ever have to close a whole district. Right? I mean, the ultimate goal that this board is striving for is to have our kids in our schools. So, I mean, I think that's an important piece to this. We're gonna do everything we can to mitigate risk in such a way that we, our kids can be here and do the cleaning and all that goes with it. But that's a good point, Brian, we'll give you updates on that.
One thing I think Brian, you had suggested to me before is that we make a very conscious effort to, to be daily, having people see what we're doing in the schools for cleaning.
Well, and I wouldn't even take it farther. I mean, I, I think that this board should allocate funds to have our schools cleaned better. I think we should hire additional staff that comes in and works 311 or whatever it is. We have the money to do it, we should do it.
All right, Brian, are you thinking that would be determined by, by Steve then as to how many he would need in his building?
Well, I think, yeah, you'd have to break him in, but I mean, I, I think that that's a wise use of the money that the taxpayers are giving us from, you know, from my management.
And this time in season, you know, what we're going through anyway.
Yeah.
I'll bring it up, thank you.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Brian, just to say, I think, you know, Steve, our Buildings and Brands Supervisor, I don't think he would disagree cause he knows, you know, our staff is structured.
It's a big job.
So, him and I were talking about two, one of the documents he wanted to sit down and work with me on is, what would we want classroom teachers and students to clean? You know, if given the supplies, training, things like that. And what would custodial staff clean? Because there are certain things, he's like, I can't extend them further right now because they're covering so much. So, I think, you know, we would have to talk to Lynn and things like that, but I think he would very much agree, you know, that that would be something that may help him, so.
We'll explore that, yeah.
Resources are available, use them.
Thank you. So, three?
Three, self-check for students and staff. So, Denise, here.
So, previously the district plan had called out, we were gonna do the health checks and temp checks at the door. Looking at the research and best practice, things like that, we're now moving those health checks and temp checks and asking families and staff to do them at home and not do them at the door. So, that's something, if the board is on the same page and support that, that would change. And then we would just need to give an update, cause I know Terry and I did state that on Facebook Live, that that would be the procedure, but that's knowing research and updates, this would move to home, so.
How does that, so that would be the same for busing? Those parents should...
Before they get on the bus, yes.
And one important, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to know, okay, so, um, with this self-check or this self-check, do they have to check in then and say, hey, my kid's good to go? Or he's not? Or do they just report, okay, he's not good to go and this is what he's got going? And then what happens if somebody doesn't report in?
So, as for like if they do their check and say their kid is showing these symptoms, that's where we say, call your child and say for the day.
Right, don't come in, don't, right, I get that.
Yep. And tell us the symptoms, like you're saying, here's what they're displaying, cause that's gonna be part of our data to share with the county to say, here's what we see. If they send them to school and that's where Denise and I are talking about, we're gonna have training for staff and the fam, for families on how to look for these symptoms. Because, you know, if I'm eating almonds and I need to clear my throat and I coughed once, I don't want a teacher sending me to the office because I was clearing my throat. So, we would wanna educate, here's when you see, if, here's what would be considered like a consistent cough, this is when you would send them to the office. So, that way we can educate our staff, so that way they feel comfortable in recognizing, this might be a symptom, yes, I sent a kid to the office, so.
That's not my question.
Oh, sorry.
My question is, how are we requiring the parents to report this?
We're not.
We're not.
That's the expectation of all staff and families before they send their kids, that they do it.
Right, that they do it.
There's no...
That's also the problem.
And that, you're right.
That's why we gotta be checking.
And if they send their kid and their kid's got a symptom, because if they didn't even bother to check.
We're gonna be looking for it.
And that, that goes in what Brian was, was saying is that the staff, if they recognize, you know, a child that's got a persistent cough or something that, you know, indicative, you know, you might feel, Ms. Sniprah, you might be able to say better. But those symptoms, that's then they would be directed to the office and then directed towards that appropriate treatment. Does that, Pat, is that kinda where you were going?
Yeah. He doesn't like the answer, but no, it doesn't sound like it.
I mean, the obvious problem is there's gonna be plenty of parents that aren't gonna do that.
Right.
So, really that...
Oh, they might do it at first, but then you're tired of it.
Yeah, I mean, real honesty, that section is, it's not worth the paper it's written on because you're gonna have a whole bunch of people that are gonna send their kids to school without checking them.
Especially if they're rushed in the morning.
Right. Just, I mean, it's, I understand why it's there, but it's not gonna happen.
Well, we're gonna do the best job we can to make it happen.
Well, I would say you could start with this. And if you're starting to see a lot of kids come up that, that aren't, uh, or that obviously came to school sick, then you've got a problem and then you have to reevaluate how that checking is done. Because this, this may not work in that regard, the problem.
But remember, only 40, young kids typically don't have a fever. So, that's going to be the only thing that you can check at the door.
Right.
I mean, you can ask them questions.
Right.
I mean, but again, now you're bunching up people.
Right.
Right, and, and the drawbacks, there's, I get it, I get it, I get it.
But I, but I just wanted you to know.
Right.
Mind you that, that, and then there's some litigation, there's some legal things that, oh, the school district said, these kids are all safe here. Well, wait a minute. Not every, everybody that has symptoms has a temperature. So, we're kind of assuring our population that whoever's in the building's safe because their temperature was okay.
Well, we're going to allow these kids to come. There's gonna be kids in our school that are positive for COVID and nobody knows. You're looking, you're seeing it in professional sports right now. They're only identifying positives because they're mandated to test. These players don't have symptoms. The whole Miami Marlins team is out and none of them had symptoms, I mean, very few, so.
Yeah, but that's a good point, Pat. We gotta be revisiting.
As we go. Okay, I'm fine, I'm fine.
Any other suggestions or?
I don't know how you work that, I mean, what is, why is the state saying not to do the checks at school now? What is the...
It's the CDC that's recommending that to do it because age 10 and under usually, um, are not at the biggest risk for COVID. And, you know, sometimes parents will pre-medicate their kid before school, so you're gonna miss the temp. You know, like Terry and Brian, I said, how is a six-year-old gonna tell you, I have a cough? Then we're, have our mask on, okay, yeah, do you have now, yeah? I mean, you know, they don't understand what we're asking, so.
Right.
I mean, you have to kinda weigh the pros and cons and...
That, that would be a pro of having the parents do it.
Right.
Right, right.
I get that.
Yeah.
But I get it when the parents are gonna be, if the parents begin to be lax in it. That's, that's my concern more than anything. Okay.
We have the same worry. I don't know, what Denise said, I've had that same conversation, we have the same worry, yep.
Anything that goes without saying, this is a, that it's gonna continue living, you know, what we see is gonna help dictate, it's gonna dictate what our policies are as we move forward. That's, that's a...
Yeah, I get it.
Number four, are we ready for number four?
Brian, you wanna talk about that, the hybrid model?
Sure. So, at the yellow level, the original recommendation, we're looking at additional ones. At yellow, it'd be half the school attends Monday, Tuesday. Wednesday would be a cleaning, teacher prep day. Thursday, Friday would be a second group of students. The high school, actually, they're doing some research to say what additional options are out there to say, how do we have all of our high school students do similar to like the middle school and elementary of being in cohort and possibly staying like within their advisory group? And then teachers videotv and doing these things and have all students here four days a week with Wednesday being optional. So, they're looking at additional option currently, you know, they were working on today, saying, is there another option to this? But that's something they're looking into right now. So, it originally says AB, but they're looking to see if there is another option.
What, what does that do? I mean, if we did go into the AB system, what does that do to the numbers of days that the kids are required to be in school?
Those days still will count.
As virtual, we'll, we'll, we'll do another, yeah.
Well, the days is another...
Correct. Will we be doing another thing like we do?
Yeah, and then we'll be doing a...
Adjust the hours necessary with the DPI.
Yeah, minutes of instruction, right? We have to do another waiver with DPI.
Right.
But those days count.
This is the plan that I have the most trouble with. I just, I don't like the AB schedule. I mean, all you have to do is walk outside and see these kids aren't socially distancing now. So, that AB, A group is gonna mix with the B as soon as school's out.
And that's why we're looking at this other option, which will get all kids in this building every day.
I think that we need to work hard to see that happen. That's my, my view is all the kids need to...
Are you, are you saying AB is a last resort?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I don't agree with it at all. I think it doesn't make any sense.
I'm very excited to hear that the options exploring have, have a be here.
Yeah.
You know, I'm very excited about it.
I mean, I think especially, we're gonna be wearing masks, who wants to go out? And if we're, if we have kids playing football after school, well, that doesn't, that defeats the whole purpose.
No, I, 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 I agree. So, that's why, you guys have spoke up on that one loud and clear and the high school staff has been working to find a solution that meets the criteria that you guys really want for our kids, or we all want for our kids.
But would be something I would just wanna see where you went then to if they do look at this cohort option? Cause like I said, they would have to do instruction a little bit differently. Teachers might have to make videos if we're gonna keep everyone in cohorts, do things like that. And we said everyone was here four days a week with Wednesday as an optional, so that way teachers can make videos, do all these things that they need to do because it'd almost be like all freshmen would have English 9. You would be, you would have your freshman cohorts, but then the English teacher would make a video, so all freshmen would be watching English 9 on their computer here at school. Just as an example, this is one of the things we're talking through. Would you be in support to say, hey, then on Wednesday, students can still come and it would be optional? But that way they could make videos and get prepared for the next round? Is that something we'd be open to if that meant everyone being in school for sure four days a week?
I mean, I, I think the benefits of these kids being in school with their peers four days a week is better than...
The two days.
...the number of...
And we're, the details are still, right, happening behind the scenes, so.
I think it's something that our parents would like as well.
If you're gonna make Wednesday optional, though, I, I don't, I don't know if I'd even do that. I just say...
Well, but I think there may be some groups of kids that you'd wanna see here on Wednesday too. Let's say that I'm struggling, I may wanna come in and get some extra help.
Okay.
So, I, I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be deliberately...
Right, and, and don't just come just to come.
Right, right. If you don't need to be here, we wanna get the support, help to all kids, of course.
That need it, okay, all right, I'm fine.
That's a good point, though.
Right, and I do like the, you know, we are expecting a lot more out of our teachers and if we can give them that Wednesday to more thoroughly prepare for the types of teaching they'll be doing. I think that's good and, you know, if we can get those kids in here that need to be in here, that's great. Thank you guys for working on that.
And actually, our, our high school staff, Rachel and Susan and Keith have been working on that there here. So, yes, thank you guys.
Thank you very much, yes. That's the most exciting thing I'm... Thank you. Have we covered cleaning and sanitizing?
Well, we have talked about it and, uh, one of the topics we haven't talked about, and this is a topic that's on our FAKU on the website, if you wanna check into this further. But people have asked about the HVAC. Thank goodness, we've got brand new HVAC and they're designed more purposefully and deliberately to get more air into the buildings and maximize that. But we have good filters, too. People have asked about our filters and the amount of fresh air we're bringing in the buildings. And Steve has assured us that, you know, he's maximizing that, those efforts do. And that's to the things of our, you know, new equipment at each building. We, we actually just installed that, that, um, that air wheel, what do they call that wheel over there?
Make-up air.
Yeah.
Make-up air.
Well, that...
I know what you mean.
Yeah. But bringing fresh air into the building, remember we had to do that, that went out at the middle school? But, and then Humpkey and the high school here have all brand new, so, state of the art. So, that is one thing we've got going for us. But the cleaning piece, you, I think, if you've got other questions, I know Brian's been closer to that than, than I have, but we are gonna be sanitizing, 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 sanitizing.
And you mentioned earlier about having the kids and, and teachers clean their room at the end of the day?
Certain areas, so like...
Certain areas, like their computers, keyboards?
Exactly, tables, certain things.
Where they're around.
Correct. So, and that's where we're looking at, you know, of course, whatever we use is both CDC approved and KidSafe. And, you know, cause Clorox wipes, they're, you can barely find them anywhere right now. So, there's, we have a provider for our cleaning solutions where we would make sure to give teachers a copy and, or a bottle and they would spray the table, kids might wipe it down. You know, so the kids aren't handling the solution. But Steve and I would be working out what would be classroom expected versus the custodial staff, cause there's still certain things, yep, the custodial staff would be responsible.
Okay.
Brian, this is Lynn.
Hi, Lynn.
Hi. I just want the board to know also that we purchased another sanitization machine where we could do the mist. Uh, we now have three of those machines where we mist. And it sanitizes instant, so just so you know that too.
Okay.
Thank you, Lynn.
I'm just wondering if, um, parents are gonna want their kids cleaning with any kind of solution at all? I mean, just a comment?
Yeah.
That might be something...
Love to watch for that.
I think the reinforcement of the com, you know, good hygiene practices is just as important, you know, for young kids to be washing their hands and, you know, things of that nature. of that nature. That's, that's a huge component of this whole project, you know? And that hopefully some of that will carry home to those hygiene practices.
Good, I can talk a little bit about virtual learning, are we ready for that?
A little bit, Terry.
Just a little bit?
Just go ahead.
So we, we have a subcommittee of the Teaching and Learning Committee that's been working on virtual, and so it's out on the website. We've pushed it out to our families and let them know that, we were asking them to fill out a short little survey. So the families go out, fill out that survey, the building principals receive the, the results of that survey, they follow up with the families. And then what we've get, we've got about 50 students that are registered for virtual through the schools, not WISE, right, separate from WISE, but Stacy Russell, who's our person that helps lead with WISE, is gonna be supporting and helping each of the buildings that get those kids an online subscription or set up here at the high school with classes. And our goal is to have those kids up and running before the school year even gets here, the start of the school year, so that way we can get that all happening before the rush of the start of the school year. So about 50 learners right now, it's about, you know, a little bit less than 5%, but that's typically what other districts are seeing, all right? So we're gonna do another push next week and just help parents understand that if they're interested in that, that's a, that's an option as well.
So these are the kids that choose not to come to school or just into virtual?
Right, and we've asked them to do a semester, right, so that we don't have people coming and going. So we're trying to do that, and then we're working on, each building is working on staffing and making sure that those kids and families are supported in the virtual format. So that's that. It's worked out pretty well, we gotta just work on the next level. Now, what does that look like if I'm a teacher? How often do I need to support the, the student and check in with the family? So we gotta work out the details on that, but it's all coming together.
Has there been any consideration with starting the first month or two of the school year virtual, just as, you know, the cases are rising? On Friday, there was 209 case counts, as of today, there's 243. So has there been any consideration, since we don't know how it's gonna play out, to just start virtual and see how it goes the first, you know, four, six, eight weeks? Or is it just kind of, are we going with the, the green, yellow, and red response system? Just a thought, just a thought to see.
Certainly, I mean, that would be a red response, right?
Yeah, I understand, but I was just curious if there's been any talk about starting the school year out as, you know, the first month or two as virtual?
No.
No consideration?
Well, that, I don't know that it, it's not been considered, it just hasn't been. We haven't stopped to talk specifically about that, I think it could come up. But this is important to know, so the kids and families that are choosing virtual, right, they're going to get a different curriculum than what our kids are getting in the schools. And if we end up going to a red, the kids at home will get a, the best or a curriculum. We've, we're purchasing a curriculum over here to work with the virtual kids, at least K8, right? The high school, our high school teachers are gonna be working with virtual kids, and they'll be getting, you know, they could be getting our, our high school curriculum, but we could be purchasing a curriculum there as well. So they, they will be two different curriculums. Does that make sense? So if we did go virtual in the beginning, then kids would be, we're calling that remote learning, and the kids that are learning virtually are full-time virtual, all right? We are working out, WISE has invited all of the kids, they do field studies and they do field trips and that kind of thing. WISE is, is gonna be inviting these 50 kids to participate in some of their field trips and field studies. And so we're gonna try to make it, you know, as engaging as we can for them as well. But you're, not specifically, I mean, just what's in the, the plan.
Well, and we don't know that, right, because we don't know what data we're using to determine colors yet.
Correct, we don't have.
And then, so when we do know that, who's going to be in charge of making that decision?
It'll be the three of us and the county. And we're gonna be working with other districts too. So they don't necessarily have this tiered approach, but they have, they have similar practices that they would, that you'd see in our green, similar practices that you'd see in our yellow, and similar practices with red.
So what, I mean, what are the, I don't have the color in front of me, what are the differences between the green and yellow?
Well, green is more of your normal, you know, cases are low, there's a trajectory, you know, heading downward.
How does the school look different?
So for the school looking different, green, kids would still have the opportunity to move about their day, go to music, do things like that. Yellow is more of a cohort where the teachers travel to the students, so they won't be going to music, music teacher would be coming to the grade level classroom. So that's basically the main difference.
So that over.
So I mean, real honestly, it doesn't really matter, our kids are gonna be in school in green or yellow.
Right.
Then barring a major catastrophe for red.
Right.
Our kids are gonna be in school.
Right.
But if that dashboard lit up, you know, if my dashboard lit up.
Right.
That's kinda. And I, you know, if we can, like I say, if we can keep the board up to date through, you know.
Yeah, we can give a report every week after we need.
I guess I'm, I'm looking for when you guys figure out the data points over there.
Well, and everybody's looking for the data points, and it's not gonna be, you know, checked by boxes and we're gonna be yellow. I mean, it's, there's gonna have to be some, but we'll, we'll.
Move it.
So, yeah, there's gotta be, it's great.
I, I just don't want it to be somebody comes in and we're making a decision on the plan, like, I'm just saying that Brian has a family member that has COVID, and now he wants to shut down the school. You know, I want it to be some data here, not, not Brian's got.
You're, you're, you're saying you'd like, like to know what is gonna be, what's gonna open that gate to, to get to that.
Right, I mean, you understand.
Where, where's the percentage gonna fall?
That's virtual learning.
Very good, difficult stuff, difficult stuff. Number seven? I think we covered some of this a little bit.
Does Denise wanna talk a little bit about that?
So one protocol for when students or staff are sick, so we can start with students, when showing symptoms at school, recognizing that if it's possible COVID-like symptoms, probably they would be sent down to the office, and then each school building has an isolation room, so that student would go into the isolation room, mask, and then we would call the parents and have them pick up their kiddo. And then that's separate from, you know, we're hoping to do like simple first aid measures right in the classroom, so Johnny falls down on the playground, he's got a skinny that they could just take care of that right in the classroom. We wanna eliminate a lot of that traffic to the main office.
And that room, that.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And same with staff, the same thing, so if they recognize that they're sick, then they could automatically just go out once they check in, and then they would leave the premise.
They'd go home, they could just go home rather than going.
Right, right.
Okay.
So if you have a student that's sick and, how do you determine how many students have to have sickness before you're gonna change the levels or, or, or is this, what's our protocol to change?
Part of that is the data from the Woodfawn Health Department, from DHS, and then the data that's collected through our internal, so like when parents call their kiddos in, we're gonna have a Google spreadsheet that says Johnny has a plot fever, so all that data's gonna be used to determine what level we're at. Of course, you know, if it's a positive COVID, that protocol, that's gonna come directly from the health department.
So if we have a kiddo or a teacher that is a positive COVID, which we will have.
Right.
What is the, what is happening then?
So, so that's all gonna be driven by the health department.
So what is their stance now? So if, if your teacher and your husband has COVID, is our district saying, don't come to work, or is our district saying, you're fine if you're wearing a mask and you don't have any symptom? Like, what, what are we doing? Cuz that's gonna come up too, somebody's gonna say, well, I was by somebody this weekend that had COVID. So what are, are, are expectations of our staff?
So from what, any conversations we had, that's where they're gonna do the tracing to see how many people have been affected, things like that. So we would be in communication, so if a teacher were to say to us, my husband has it, and we do the tracing and things like that, talking with the health department, they would help us say, yep, it's safe, or no, the whole family should quarantine for two weeks. So we would have that conversation to say, who have you been encountered with, and that's similar too, depending on the level we're at. So say we're at yellow and say a student tests positive, we would do the tracing, and that's where they would say, okay, yep, we need to shut down that class, or they would say that student needs to be out for two weeks, but not the class, things like that. And some of that's in this resource package, but a lot of it's gonna be based on the tracing and conversations there to say how many people have they encountered.
What about teachers and substitutes? For example, if a lot of teachers are testing positive and we're not, we're not having enough subs to cover for those teachers that are testing positive, what's gonna be the, the protocol for that?
That's the one we're trying to figure out, cuz that is definitely one of our.
Right, yeah, teachers. Yeah, you're, you'll, you'll be available. I'm sure the hospital free you up, Brian. But that could force us into red. We may have to leave a classroom hall a day.
Well, and I guess one of my concerns, I, I get both sides, but one of my concerns is a staff member coming and saying, my cousin's friend over, you know, has COVID, and now I'm not, I don't want him to work. I don't, I don't want that either.
There's gonna be a protocol for that.
So do we have that in place as a district?
There will be, yeah. All those scenarios we're trying to sort out, and the county's been helping us with that.
Well, I think too, that teacher who is quarantined or possibly positive, they could maybe do some teaching from home, you know? They might be, you know, maybe asymptomatic, that they could, I don't know, I mean, I think they're probably, you guys are probably looking at that too.
But again, if it's a teacher and we don't have somebody to be in that third grade classroom.
Right.
That's the biggest problem, I guess.
You can wipe out from school, your kitchen staff is down, you know?
But that is really good, and that's what we really, you know, with teacher, teachers I call, you know, really working with them to develop that pool and get some high-quality guest teachers in.
So if a teacher gets sick with COVID and goes on quarantine, what happens to all the kids that were in their class?
And the county would step in then, and they'd be asking questions to determine the risk, level of risk towards those kids. That's a great question. So they, they really come in and then start, they, they help us, we help them, but do that contact tracing to determine, you know, if there needs to be a quarantine in place or not.
And what about from our, just an employee benefit standpoint? Are our teachers expected to use sick time, their personal sick time for COVID?
And there's gonna be, that's all sorted out through, and they're, and matter of fact, Lynn and I have a meeting tomorrow on that topic.
And then like what if they're not sick, but somebody says they can't come cuz their husband is sick?
And that's part of this?
You know what I'm saying, like.
Yeah, there's all kinds of scenarios that pop up.
Right, I mean, you'd have to consider, are they gonna teach from home? They're gonna teach from home, they're, they're teaching, they're doing their job.
But remember, we have 50 kids learning at home.
I know.
You don't need a whole slew.
I know, but I'm saying.
Want to comment on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Rick and I actually looked at all the benefits available to our staff, and we came up with this summary that we plan on mailing to our staff that shows the options that they have available. We will also share that with the school board, so they know exactly what we're sending our staff. The COVID at the 19, there are some special circumstances where teachers or staff are allowed to take off, but there are certain criteria that you have to meet in order to take off these extra special benefits. And all of that will be laid out in a memo that we're going to dispatch later this week. But I'll make sure that you can get a copy of that memo as well.
Okay.
Well, Brian, that addresses exactly what you're getting at. Cousins and all that, yeah. Thank you, Lynn. So, anything else on that? There's gonna be, there's gonna be plenty of guidance, you know, in these areas.
Probably not directly related, and if you're working on it, it's fine, but what are you gonna do in the event that a staff member says, I'm not coming to work? I don't think we should be in school? You guys are having students in school and I'm not coming?
And we'll just have to work through each, work through that case.
I mean, some teachers aren't even sending their students to school, I think that sends a big message too, you know, just things that contemplate about, you know, so.
Yeah, and again, we don't have answers to everything, right? So we're just being honest.
Yeah.
Some of these aren't gonna be tricky.
Yep.
And again, the more we can do to help people feel safe. Yeah.
Yeah, we add the fear.
So we, are we ready to move on to athletics?
CWC dash L. Who wants to cover number eight?
Well, I was just gonna talk a little bit about it, cuz it's not fully, it's not, it's not fully been discussed and shared yet, but last week, the Central Wisconsin, the Central Wisconsin, what is it, CWC, Central Wisconsin Conference?
That's where I am.
Met and around football.
I didn't notice.
You what?
I didn't know what it stood for.
Central Wisconsin Conference, large. So they had a meeting last week, and those are, you know, all the athletics, I met with the super tenants today from our South Central Conference. And, you know, there's, there's conversations that are happening, some counties are saying, you know what, we're not okay with you sending kids to Montoma to play football, or whatever it might be, but we've, we've come up with the idea that, yep, we're gonna do everything we can to support the South Central Conference. Now, the football here falls out of South Central Conference, so they're talking about spectators, they're talking about cheerleading, so there's all sorts of topics yet out there. So just, I mean, this gives you kind of a taste of what, you know, at least at the football level, what it's gonna look like. So with the South Central Conference, we'll be meeting with them and coming up with guidelines around those as well. So there's not a whole lot out there yet, we continue to meet. WI continues to, you know, really push to make sure that our kids are getting that opportunity to, to get involved in athletics, so. And then there was a side note here, the Valley Conference Schools, there's a group of, of health boards that are trying to push it back even further, to start, let school get started, and then, you know, let athletics follow. And so we don't, I haven't heard anything on that yet, but there could be more to come on that.
What is our position on stand, on fans, spectators?
What is your position?
I think it's garbage. I think you should have spectators in football, you.
Can all athletics?
If you're wearing masks and you're following the mandate, that's my opinion.
Sure. Way out.
Out, outdoor.
You're.
Yeah, especially football and outdoors.
I mean, for sure, outdoor, but I mean, if you're following the governor's mandate and you're wearing a mask at a basketball game, what difference, what, how is that different than sending your kid to school?
Well, I'd say the only difference is you have an opposing school coming in. You have spectators from another area.
And I think that, I, you can't think of a time when our gymnasium is packed, I think you could do it, you could put a little blue piece of tape on where you're expecting people to sit, I mean, they'll be sitting on each other's laps, but I think you could do it safely.
Yep. There was even the talk, could each athlete have three tickets? And they could have three people.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that you take, spectating away from our high school athletes, I mean, they, they thrive on that, it's part of their high school career. If we're, if we're doing it safely.
Other board members, this is good input because this is all taking shape.
The, the only other thing that, I mean, we did mention here is extracurricular activities, clubs, things like that. And I know I've talked about this before. I talked to Keith about it one time and, you know, specifically with me, it's chess club. So that's because of what I do, but. You know, could we do that? But if you clean that.
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
The thing is, if you clean that, that, that room after the last class, do you want a, a group going in there?
Oh, they have to be cleaned again.
Mucking it up.
Yeah.
And I guess from a spectator's standpoint, it's, it's that spectator's choice to come. I mean, nobody's saying, it's not like school where we're going to have school. If you don't feel comfortable coming to watch a football game, well, then stay home.
Yeah.
But if you feel comfortable wearing a mask, then come to the football, come to the football game.
What's the rest of the board's thoughts on that?
I agree.
You agree?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah. I mean, no spectators, I, I, I disagree with, you know. I'm not saying we necessarily want a packed house, but I don't think that's going to happen.
Cody?
I'm going to abstain.
Brian?
I need to remain neutral. You know, dressed up in case anything comes on, that's my duty as well. Try to stay neutral.
Yeah, I'll share this information.
Can I pose a question?
Sure.
One way or the other, but is this, I don't know, because I haven't been part of athletics conversations. Is this a conference decision to be uniform between the different ones? I don't know. So that might be.
Well, that's what they're trying to work on.
That's a good point. I get it.
I, I get that, but I'm saying, can the school boards, when we're having our input at that conference meeting, can you tell our athletic director this is what the school board wants?
Yes, absolutely. That's what I'll do with this information.
That's what I'm hoping to get all the input for, like.
Right, yeah.
I'm not, I don't care if you say, don't come to the football game. That's your opinion. I'm just voicing my opinion.
Yeah.
And I would prefer that our athletic director goes with, with our intentions, not.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm struggling with the CWC decision on no spectators and I, we had no input on that. So I certainly am not done with that.
Well, my personal thought is if things keep going the way they're going, the WI will just push it back like they were talking about where basketball will be the first sport played.
Yeah, I don't know, but yeah.
I think that, you know, you have a three to one.
No, this is good information, yeah.
Lot of, lot of big stuff here, guys. And I think, I want to thank Brian for putting this list together. I think you hit, you hit the things I was looking for. When Brian and Terry and I met, you know, I tried to take in all the input I have listed, you know, that you guys have brought to the table. And tried to get that on here, this list. Is there something that, that we did not get on this list that you would like to cover?
The one thing I had was where are we with liability protection? Do they, you know?
Yeah, well, we can, Lynn, you want to talk about that? Where are we with liability protection?
She might be going.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I can't. So, um, I, I contacted our, um, insurance agent, um, basically immediately after this COVID thing started happening. And I wanted to make sure that we were protected as a desperate in regards to liability and sue. Or, um, protection if, well, a COVID case came down and needed extra help for cleaning or liability in that case. We are covered on all ends. So, um, if they decide to sue, if they decide to sue us regarding, uh, COVID liability, uh, we would be covered as long as we follow all of the, um, state, federal and local protocols. If we go out on a limb and do whatever we want to do regardless of what the protocols are stating at those levels, then our liability coverage would be null. Uh, so it's important that we follow what the county says and state says and what the federal says. In regards to cleaning, if there's a COVID case that has an appetite and they, we have to do some major cleaning in regards to, um, a COVID case. Uh, a few years ago, the board actually purchased another insurance policy. It was the remediation insurance policy. Uh, that's the case there's mold that grows or some sort of environmental, that would be covered under that policy. So we are sitting very well in regards to insurance.
And whatever we decide is going to be in line with all those recommendations.
And that's why we're meeting, we're working in conjunction with the county. Yeah. Good question. Any other topics?
I think I got everything I wanted out in the air and, you know, I want to, you know, I really did feel like, while I did shut down our last meeting, guys, Brian, Denise, I want to honor the work that you've done. And I, I think that we as a board can back that. I, you know, it's hard, but, you know, we are in a very political, evolving environment. And some of this falls outside our, our venue of what we can control and what we can't control. But just including us in that, in those kind of decisions, you know, that, you know, that where we are on this scale and where we might be, I think that's important. Brian, you had identified one other thing. I can't remember what it was.
I don't write down where the data points.
Okay, that's it, yeah. I'm just gonna, you know, I, I want to go into this school year with optimism. I think it's important for our students and our families to define this new normal. I hate that word too. I hate the word cohorts and I hate, I hate the word new normal.
This was a lot.
Can I just, well, I just had one comment to make. I think it would be important to send out an anonymous survey to staff to just see how comfortable they feel with the guidelines, coming back, staying home. Again, anonymous, you know, you really want to know how the staff feels. So I think that would be really, really good to do, so.
As a matter of fact, uh, we, we've created one and each, by last Friday, each building principal needed to connect with each staff.
Good.
To share a more detailed plan of the district plan. So I don't know, Brian, when were we going to send that out?
This week.
This week.
Okay, thanks, guys.
So, but yeah, it's real, real generic and it's really, um, allows them to express their.
Okay, awesome.
Good.
What about the requirements? And I don't know what they are for absences for students. So I don't know if it's, I mean, how many days you get before you're truant or whatever. And I don't think we want all our students rushing to Aspiris to get permission to come back to school either. So how are we going to work through that?
So some of the things we've been working through, so Denise, spend, I'll let her speak about our county one. On the school side, that's the guidance that DPI is still working on because you have the legal side of it. The 10 days is what you're allowed to miss, but depending on how we come back to school, whether it's in person, virtual, how do you track virtual attendance, all these things? DPI is working on some guidance. It has not been released yet because that's our same question. Because as you know, Mrs. Baldwin, Mr. Thomas, and then Mr. Spring at the elementary help track those attendance things and when to send out letters. They're saying, you know, if you go all virtual, well, two, virtual is very different if you go district to district. Cause some are, kids are getting timed classes at certain times, some aren't just go play assignments. So kids have to do that. So do you track attendance by homework completion or whether they're on at a certain time? Each district is going to be so different. That's where they're trying to give us some guidance, but they don't have it finished yet. So from the school side, we don't have an answer yet, but from the county side with the doctors already.
So we met last week, the, uh, Wood County schools, um, Terry was part of that. The Wood County Health Department and then I was on for Aspiris and then as school nurse. And then there were a couple other providers that are on the West Basin Rapid reopening school. So, I mean, it's very challenging right now. The COVID turnaround times are somewhere's up. I mean, depending on when, you can see how many that we've tested or that the county tested. Right now average is about seven days turnaround time for level three and four. So that would be a non-help care provider, somebody that's not in the hospital. So, you know, with these kids, what do we do? Send them and, you know, can't expect them all to fall out of Aspiris or Marshville. And say, hey, Johnny's got a fever and I need a note or you can't go back to school. You know, what does that look like? The logistics piece of it is very challenging. So we're kind of in the beginning stages of looking at that. My dream would be, you know, to test everybody that has a symptom, COVID. That's how you can mitigate the spread of it. That's how you slow it down and you get those kids back to school or staff. So it's.
So they are going to put a concentrated effort on taking care of students and our staff across the county. So they have a, I mean, that's a priority up there. So I really appreciate that they, I mean, and they've got the doctors on board with that. So that's going to be a big push.
So if we could get somebody to donate a testing machine, that would be ideal. So you have a mobile unit go around, test swab.
Lot of information, guys. I, uh, I think that I, I as a board member can back what we have here in front of us and be an ambassador for it.
Thank you. There's been a ton of work. I mean, the staff has worked incredibly hard, so.
It's going to continue to take shape and I can see where that's coming. There's, there's still question marks, but they're, they're getting answered. Yes, yes.
And I, I don't think we shared this with you. Uh, starting next week, we are going to do a bunch of FaceTime lives and really push, or Facebook lives, uh, around topics such as, you know, that, that check before you leave in the morning. What does it look like if a student does get sick at school? What does it look like, uh, from the athletic side? I mean, so just a lot of those hot topic areas that we're going to cover through a Facebook live. And then parents, any parent that has questions around that, we're going to put it on our webpage. People can click on it and get the answers.
So when are those Facebook lives going to be?
Uh, we're going to start, we're going to put them together next week. We're going to do one on transportation. So there'll be, we'll get them out to you as soon as they're.
But I mean, is there a set time evening or?
You can, you can see the recorded version.
Yeah, but don't, but the live version, what is, is it going to be like every Monday night or?
Well, we haven't really, I mean, we're working on a calendar right now and we'll get that out to you. Yeah. Yeah. So, well, we appreciate you guys taking the time to help us. I mean, this is certainly not the celebration you want to be working around, but. Then folks have worked hard, you know, and I know that you guys have been passionate about us doing the right thing and your voices have been heard. I mean, even though we haven't sat at the table here, but.
Another, another question, I mean, is kind of off the subject a little bit, but, uh, we had talked about the day that we're going to bring our teachers back for orientation kind of thing. And we did have a breakfast. Oh, as if you said that they were, we were still going to do that. Is that still on or is that going to be off now or?
Uh, we're just starting to work on that right now. So our new teachers that are coming in, we never did an end of the year celebration with our, our new teachers from last year. So we're going to do kind of a combination where our, our old new teachers, last year's new teachers are going to just celebrate and share some ideas and thoughts they have for our new teachers. So, and yeah, so we're going to have a new, it's new teacher luncheon. So there'll be some, you know, we're going to do the, just be more cautious. We most likely will not be gathering everybody up in the auditorium. So we're, you know, we're going to probably get a message to the staff from the board and myself to kick off the year. Maybe we could do something creative there that way. But, um, you know, probably it'll be breakfast, you know, grab a breakfast and go off to your room or something like that.
If it's nice weather, we can come.
Yeah. Yeah, right. And, and the, the question, actually on the agenda for our admin team tomorrow is the staff picnic that we've done for the last eight years. So that'll all come, uh, we'll get you, get that on your calendars. Yeah.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your time. For those participating via Zoom, thank you for your time. Ms. Denise Niff, Ms. Denise Niff-Neesbrecht, and Mr. Brian Gill, thank you very much for the work that you've done on us and, uh.
And thank, many of the people with us tonight have certainly added to the community work and they've been showing up on Wednesday. So thank you. And Jesse, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you all for joining us via Zoom. I know it's a, it can be kind of a frustrating process, but in these new times, it's going to become more of a reality.
It's a new norm, Brian.
I don't want to say that, but I want to thank my fellow board members for their time. And we'll be working on that stuff, you know, we'll, we as a group, as a team, as NAFUSA will come together and get through this. At this point, Mr. Mahan.
I'm going to adjourn second.
All in favor, please leave aside by saying aye.
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 Opposed, Austin Carey, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much for your time, everybody.